Cool, it is cool.
And they're doing a great job.
Okay.
Are you ready, Amy?
Yep, we're all set.
We need a roll call, I guess.
Uh, do we need another roll call?
You have it on the agenda.
Okay, Mr.
That's what puzzled me before.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I think we're all set.
All right. Opening remarks, Mr. Turner.
I'll pass tonight on remarks and go to the, ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance. Now we'll, uh, accept a motion, uh, for, to accept the, uh, minutes of a public meeting on May 19th, 2021, the regular city council meeting, May 19th, 2021, the public hearing of June 2nd, 2021, and the special city council meeting of June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign? That passes. All right, there's no public communications, Amy?
No.
All right, written communications?
An email from the Health Commissioner, Joan Seidel, thanking council for its discussion and vote of a resolution supporting public health was received on May 20th, 2021. A letter from the League of Women Voters of Kent regarding reactivation of observer corps where designated league members attend governmental meetings notifying council that Kitty Enders will be attending Kent City Council meetings as an observer that was received on May 18th, 2021. The Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for June 1st was received on May 25th, 2021. The notification of the June Board of Health meeting was that it was canceled was received on May 28th. An email from Mr. Peter Peno regarding the proposed changes to the Architecture Review Board received June 2nd and forwarded to council. The Standing Rock Cemetery Meeting Minutes for May 13th and the agenda for June 10th meeting was received on June 2nd, 2021. An email from Community Development Director Bridget Susel to City Council sharing the minutes from the Architecture Review Board meeting on May 4th, 2021 regarding their courtesy review of the proposed new City of Kent Administration Building. And Parks and Recreation Board Packet for June 17th, 2021, and the mail survey that was sent out was received June 11th. Also received an email from Police Chief Shearer updating council on a few items such as the Lexi Pol conversion, Detective Paul Fafriks retirement, future ballistic vest request and meeting scheduled with KSUPD, the Black United Students and undergraduate student government that was received on June 11th. And then received the Planning Commission Meeting Agenda and Staff Report for the next meeting on June 15th. I received that on June 15th.
Okay, thank you, Amy. City Managers Report, Mr. Amerine?
Yeah, I'd like to move up, uh, items one through 17 on the City Managers Report.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Gwen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rohr, is there more?
Mr. Mayor, since this is our last, uh, meeting on Zoom, I just want to take a minute to thank Amy, to thank Gary, all of the staff, all of council, and the community for really kind of, uh, cooperating with us. I know this has not been the easiest transition to go on the, uh, in cyberspace to do our, our public work, but I think in all in all, we got the functional work done that needed to get done, and I appreciate everyone's cooperation. And so, let's hope that's the end of it, and let's hope there's no comebacks to this virus, and just want to thank you and put a period at the end of this Zoom era. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving to the Standing Committee and Legislation Committee, the whole, I need a motion to accept the minutes from the June 2nd meeting.
So moved.
Mike, second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, okay, thank you. There was no action recommended. Uh, we need to vote on the boards of commission. Is there any motion for the people that applied?
I have something.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, focus on the Salary Review Committee.
Let's do the part of thing first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I can do that, well, I would move that, uh, to appoint Karen Beck to the Part of Board.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mike. Is there any discussion? I see none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstained.
One of state. Okay, further, Heidi?
Yes, um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kathy Slater, Benjamin Tipton, and Thomas Pascarella to the three vacancies of the Salary Review Committee, and Warner Mendenhall, and Jeff Rogar as the two alternates.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by John Kuhar. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I do.
Go ahead.
I want to say thank you to everyone that applied for this. You know, unfortunately, we only have three vacancies and two alternates, but for everybody that applied, I think, uh, we really are appreciative and encourage people to keep applying for these commissions. It's really important that we have.
Thank you, I think we all agree with you. So, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign? All right, thank you, we need a motion to authorize it now. And add it into the draft. John, you made a motion? Jack, you seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Okay, thank you. For the clerk redraft number 2021-53, entitled only.
Draft number 2021-053, a resolution appointing Karen Beck to the Portage Area Regional Transit Authority Part of Board and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Please call Rohr on suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Amerine?
Abstained.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Where do you go?
Did we lose him? Oh, he's coming back in. We lost him.
He's not here.
Here he comes.
Roger, you're muted.
Yeah, I apologize, I lost my whole internet for some reason.
Well, welcome back. Um, we are on voting for suspension and we're up to you.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go. Adoption.
Second. Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see none, please call Rohr for adoption.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Abstained.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2021-053 has passed.
Okay, thank you, with the clerk redraft number 2021-54 entitled only?
Draft number 2021-054, a resolution appointing Kathy Slater, Tom Pascarella, and Benjamin Tipton to the Salary Review Committee, and Jeff Rogar and Warner Mendenhall as alternates and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Uh, John, second it. Please call Rohr on suspension.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
On adoption.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see none, please call Rohr for adoption.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, or Resolution 2021-054 has passed.
Okay, thank you, that's it for committee, the whole, moving into community development, Mr. Kuhar.
Yes, I'd like to move the committee meeting approval for June 2nd and the one action.
Is there a second? Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Mr. Kuhar?
Yeah, uh, I am definitely going to vote for this. Uh, I, I come with that vote though a little disappointed and slightly angered that the, the area west of South Water Street from Summit Street was not included in this, which is very much a part of the South End, and definitely a location that is most traveled in front of Walgreens and Subway, where there should be some kind of a recognition, uh, kind of feel left out in that, uh, between there and Franklin, because there's a lot of families that, uh, were criticized for being South Enders, but also at the same time were proud badge because they were South Enders. As a matter of fact, if people are donating money, I would be the first one to donate $500 if someone wanted to institute getting signs in those proper locations too. So, that's all I have to say on that.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Uh, the clerk redraft number 2021-055 entitled only?
Draft number 2021-055, an ordinance accepting a donation from the Portage Foundation in an amount not to exceed $13,995, and use the funds to pay advanced display for new signage for the historic South End neighborhood and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Roger. Please call Rohr on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Uh, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call Rohr for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-055 has passed.
Okay, thank you, with the clerk redraft number 2021-056 entitled only?
Draft number 2021-056, an ordinance amending the downtown Kent Dora that was enacted on June 17th, 2020, ordinance 2020-49, to extend the Dora hours until 11:00 PM on Saturday, June 26th, 2021 only, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen, please call Rohr on suspension.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like.
We need a motion for adoption, then discussion.
But before the motion for adoption, I'd like to make a motion to amend the, uh, ordinance.
Amy, do we have to make the motion for adoption, then let them discuss this, or discussion before I am?
Oh, it would be before you adopted it.
All right, go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, I would move that we amend the, uh, extending the Dora hours to 11 o'clock permanently, uh, seven days a week.
Second.
All right, continue your discussion, Mr. Ferrer.
Yeah, I think there's, I got, uh, I think there's two points to that. One, uh, the summer season comes upon us, I suspect we're probably going to get more than one, uh, organization ask us to extend those hours, and so instead of having to come back to council every time we want to do that, it would seem to make sense and make it easier to enact that. And, uh, and secondly, it is summer, we don't have that much time for nice weather, and so, um, you know, last call's at 9:30 already anyway, so we're really not extending it by that much, and I think people would have enjoyed the opportunity to be out till 11:00 PM, 10:00.
Mr. Sedoti, you have further?
Yes, um, number one, I think, uh, that we need to be consistent, I think, uh, when we, June 26th, if we move it to 11, our problems would occur the following week when everyone wonders why it's now 10. Uh, I think that's problematic, you know, more and more things are opening, like the Kent Stage, Kent Stage, usually their programs let out at 10 o'clock, uh, and that, that may happen as the summer unfolds here, as more and more things are opening. I think people wanting to come down, you know, downtown after the show, maybe to, you know, go to one of the establishments and grab something, and I just think it just makes common sense that if we're going to do it for one day, let, let's do it for, yeah, I, 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 I'm not so sure I'm, I'm every day of the week, but I certainly know that if Fridays and Saturdays should, should do it, but I could support Garrett's motion.
John Kuhar, you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, you know, I'm a little confused on the whole thing, are the bars still forced to close at 10 o'clock? I thought that was a state mandate from the emergency.
No.
Okay, so the bars can stay open to 1:00 and 2:30, but the Dora is just an isolated agreement with the city, is that correct?
Yes, my knowledge, my understanding.
Yeah, well, I'll support, uh, I'll support, uh, Mr. Ferrer's amendment.
All right, Heidi, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to say that I'm, I'm in support of it as well, and, you know, we really haven't had any incidents that I'm aware of, number one, number two, 9:30 does seem to be pretty early, um, and I think that what we're seeing is a lot of vibrancy downtown, and I don't really think that it's going to impact, um, it's going to have a negative impact to go one more hour. Um, yes, if we did it till 2:00 in the morning, we might see some street fights or something, but I think that, I think 11 o'clock seems really quite reasonable, and I think that as we get into the colder time, you know, if we continue to have this going, um, and the darker time, that people will limit themselves, you know, but right now, I think it's a real boon for the businesses and for the people, you know, it's like having, it's, it's a wonderful scene in Kent.
Okay, thank, Mike, you have your hand up?
That's the only complaint I've had about the Dora is it closes too early, they said another hour, they were talking two more hours, the guys I talked to, but another hour would be plenty, I think that I'm supportive of it.
Okay, is there anybody else? Gwen?
Yeah, um, I'd support it, of course, I think people really, really love it. Have we heard any, I don't, Tom's not, uh, it doesn't look like, uh, Tom Wilk is on this meeting, um, maybe Dave, have you heard that Main Street Kent has received complaints from the neighborhood or anything like that that we need to consider before we go ahead and move forward with, on this vote, or no?
No.
Because I know, I think we have about 50,000 cups that might have the time on it, but I'm sure bartenders won't have a problem explaining to people.
They're probably buying new cups bigger, because the drinks don't fit in the ones we got.
I think they already bought them, I, I think they already bought them, it has the current time on it, but like I said, I'm sure bartenders will be happy to explain that people have a little bit longer.
Yeah, John, you still had your hand up?
Yeah, so, uh, along with this, so the bars are open to 1, so is there going to be someone that says, okay, uh, you got to go back inside and finish your drink, or, you know, you clear the streets with a street cleaner, or what? Make everybody 11 o'clock, it's coherent, head back inside?
Uh, let me.
Work that out later, huh?
Well, they haven't been a problem right now, and then at 10, it's just another hour.
The bars were closed at 10 now.
No. No.
Yeah.
Heidi?
Can I address that? No, the bars stopped serving the Dora drinks a half an hour at least before the end, and then people finish that drink and they can't get another one. So if they want another drink, they go inside the box after that.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's take the vote on the amendment. Draft 2021-56 as amended.
Uh, Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Okay, the amended, um, draft ordinance number 2021-056 has passed.
Okay, thank you.
Includes community development.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kuhar. Health and Public Safety, Mr. Amerine?
Yeah, there's nothing.
I see that. Meeting minutes.
Wait, I need the, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, I moved the minutes from the June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second? Mike, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign? That passes. Yep, there's no recommendation, uh, that's it for Health and Public Safety, Land Use Committee, Mr. Ferrer, you're absent, do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to defer, but. I'll defer to the, my excellent vice chair.
Bitch, it's up to you.
All right, thank you.
Hang on, hang on. Um, the Dora, you guys voted on the amendment, but you didn't, but you didn't vote, once, once the amendment passed, you did not vote on the ordinance, so we need to go back there.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll back up.
Thank you.
I thought we voted on it as amended.
You have to vote, you have to vote on, vote on the amendment first, and then as amended.
Okay.
All right, we'll do that.
Move to approve the amendment, or the, the actual motion, amended as amended.
That's all, roll call?
Yes.
All right, please call the role, Amy.
Um, Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Now ordinance 2021-056 has passed.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, all right, moving, done with Health and Public Safety, uh, Land Use.
Okay. Okay, uh, I move to approve the committee meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gwen. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same, who abstained?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Ferrer, all right.
And I would like the two actions recommended.
Second. Second by Mike, is there any discussion on the actions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Okay, thank you, that passes, with the clerk redraft number 2021-57 entitled only?
Draft number 2021-057, an ordinance enacting new chapters of the Planning and Zoning Code and Part 11 of the Codified Ordinances Code, repealing certain chapters of the code and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Thank you by Roger, please call the role for suspension, Eric.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish? Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Mr. Fisher-Sedot?
Yeah, I, I'm going to support the, the ordinance, and I want to commend Bridget for doing a great job of, of negotiating through, uh, the issues that were brought forward, but I, I would also, um, like to see, uh, city council and the ARB have a work session sometime in the future, because I think that, uh, I don't know about the rest of council, but I think I'm even more confused now as to really what the role is, the philosophical basis for when it was first developed, and I think it would, would be to great benefit of our citizens that we all sit down and have a work session with them to see where they're coming from and where, uh, where we're coming from, they can hear where we're coming from as council, because it seems like it has, it just seems, every so often, it just seems the ARB and, uh, council, and members of council have some problems. So, anyway, I'm supporting it, but, uh, I'll say more about it when, uh, we get to councilman comments.
Okay, anybody else? Please call the role for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-057 has passed.
Okay, thank you, with clerk redraft number 2021-58 entitled only?
Draft number 2020-058, an ordinance amending the city zoning districts map for parcel number 17-031-21-00-001-000107 Lake Street to be rezoned from its current 1155I industrial to 1146CD commercial downtown and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen, please call Rohr on suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Abstained.[1684.23]
And Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Okay.
John, are you making the motion?
Yeah, move adoption.
Who seconded?
I'll second.
Jack seconded. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Usain.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh fifty-eight has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for land use. Ms. Schaefer, nice job on being a filling. Moving to the streets and sidewalk utility, Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the, uh, committee meeting minutes from June second, twenty twenty-one, and the two actions that are recommended.
There's second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion? I see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign. Thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-nine entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh fifty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the city of Kent to submit two funding applications totaling one million four hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred dollars. And to execute the subsequent agreement to the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS. Special resurfacing program fiscal year twenty twenty-two and fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And to accept the grants if awarded with corresponding appropriation of funds to resurface main and water streets. And Mogadore Road Summit Street and declaring an emergency.
And suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Of adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? I see none. Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh fifty-nine has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty and ordinance authorizing the city of Kent. To submit two funding applications totaling nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And to execute the subsequent agreements with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC. And to accept the grants if awarded with corresponding appropriation of funds and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Roger. Please call the roll.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Garrett. Is there any discussion on this ordinance adopted? I see none. Please, Rob, or Robin, your light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, that's unintentional.
All right, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yeah.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
The ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty has passed.
Hey, that's it for streets and sidewalks, utilities, finance committee, Mr. DeLeon.
I'd like to move the, uh, meeting minutes of. June second, twenty twenty-one, and the action recommended.
Need second? Second by Roger. Is there any discussion? I see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign. Okay, thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one and ordinance authorizing the water tap-in for a skilled nursing. Facility located at fifty seventy-five State Route forty-three and Malloy Road outside of the city of Kent and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension, sorry.
Second.
Okay, second by Heidi. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see none. Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two and ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designate to allow the budget and finance department to create a new general ledger fund. For the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding called the local fiscal recovery fund number one thirty-eight and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Roger. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see no discussion. Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two has passed.
Hey, thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three and ordinance accepting a donation, the amount of one hundred dollars to the city of Kent Parks and Recreation Department. Towards the purchase of a memorial tree for the Kent Parks and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Pass her?
Mike, who's the second? Need a second?
Second.
By John?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see none. Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three has passed.
Okay, that's all under finance committee. One, is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, moving on. Is there any new business?
Yes.
Roger.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna circle back to my ARB comments during the, uh, the, um, voting on the, uh. Uh, what you call it, the ordinance tonight. You know, I, I, I started doing a ledger of all the issues that keep coming up with the ARB. And I'm trying to find a common link, and I, I think a lot of it has to do. With, I really don't believe we have a shared understanding as to really how decisions are made with the ARB. Uh, I look at the, we've gotten, um, planning commission members have gotten involved. Uh, we've got, we've had, you know, community people involved. Um, we've actually, as individual council people have had, had issues. And I really don't think it's fair. I think Bridget did one heck of a job to navigate all that. But I really, I, I think when they, when this was first founded. Uh, I got, to use the mayor's comment, I don't think a lot of us were sitting around this table years ago. When, uh, the ARB was funded, founded and that it was developed and. Uh, maybe there's, maybe it's time for the, um, city council. Uh, to sit down with the ARB and maybe with the planning commission too at some point to have some kind of a work session with them. So that we can get, I think we need to have a common understanding as to what their role is, how they're making decisions. And, and maybe a shared vision as to what that organization should be. Because they don't get elected, we appoint them, and then we end up fighting with people we appoint with. And it's too easy to say that they're passionate or there's personalities involved. Uh, just dealing with people my whole career, I found that when these type of things keep coming back, it's like a. You know, it becomes an irritant and then we don't really, we, we don't really serve, I think, the public interest and, uh. So that, for what it's worth, I, 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 I don't know that, uh, I'm ready to put it into a committee, but. Uh, I just think it's something maybe we could think about and I think we can have work sessions. I mean, we. We only meet a couple of times a month, you know, formally, maybe we can have a, a work session with, uh, with them to. And, and to think about it. But anyway, that's my thought on it under new business.
Kuhar?
Well, I might be wrong, but it seems to be that. When we change the authority of the ARB, we start to have more problems and. You know, my, my thoughts are that, you know, maybe they should be in it, like they used to be, in advisory. Capacity or, or a counseling capacity and. My, that might be the answer to eliminating a lot of these little standoffs. All I got to say.
Heidi?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea that Roger had because I think it would be good to have a really, um. A, a fairly detailed discussion with them as to how they see their role and what's the purpose. And, um, just so that we can, you know, talk about things like John brought up. You know, should, should we change the authority or is there really a, a strong purpose to having such a commission? To, you know, for the benefit of the city? And, you know, I think it's a great idea to do a work session on that, you know, it's part of maybe, uh, what, what are the next steps for us? You know, for the city itself and are the, you know, is that. Architectural overlay district where they have jurisdiction? You know, is that also worth looking at, you know, where the boundaries of that are? So I think there's so many issues that it's really hard to do this piecemeal through the zoning code. Changes.
Anybody else? I, I think I better hear a motion on this, Roger.
Okay, well, I, I'd move that, uh, I'm not sure, should we put it in a committee? Um, to have conversation to decide to do it? I don't know. Dave, you're the administrator.
Work session.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to move that the city council and the architectural review board schedule a work session sometime within. The next two or three months and, um, uh, to sit down and, and to try to come to some common understanding and. And common vision as to their role.
Heidi, you seconded. Do you have more to say?
Yes, I second it. Um. No, I just think it would be a very fruitful exercise.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign? Okay, that passes. Is there any more new business? Seeing none. Council members, comments, anything? Mr. DeLeon?
Just wanna remind you about evaluations, Dave. We did, we did have get them sent out, correct?
Yes.
They're due on the thirtieth, if I understand.
Mm-hmm. I didn't get one, Amy.
You didn't? Okay, I'll reset it, Mike.
I, I didn't get mine either, Amy.
Um, we were gonna talk to you, Robin, to see how you can do it and maybe make special appointment for you.
Oh, a special appointment? Yeah, that's cool. My part of council or not, a special appointment.
I sent it electronically, Robin, so I'll give you a call.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that, that's cool. I like you guys looking out for me. You know, my, a man has to know his limitations, so that's good. I mean, I can't evaluate. I can't evaluate anybody now. That's all good. Good for you, Dave. Good for you, Dave. I'm telling you.
That's all, man.
Hey, I was always your highest, I was always his highest evaluator. I don't know if he wants to lose me.
Any more comments? Council comments? Okay, moving on to the.
Yeah.
Oh, who, who said yeah? All right, moving on to the mayor's report. Uh, if you haven't seen it, you gotta, you gotta come down, Dan Smith Park. They have a lot of, um, music playing on Friday night. Uh, from six to eight. I went last Friday. It was pretty enjoyable. There was some discomfort there, but we're gonna work on that. And, uh, fireworks on the twenty-sixth, uh, will be downtown, so come down. And Bill, uh, planning commission, and I, I, I didn't think I'd ever see this. Is going to meet and talk about the new city hall, and that's a good thing. And this is our last biro Zoom meeting. We'll all see you on July the seventh, in person, down in the fire station. Amy, Dave, I, fire chief, and, uh, Gary. Uh, I'll met down there and we think everything's safe and everything's go. We're gonna go ahead and we're gonna start them. Um, the only other thing I got, remember Father's Day is this Sunday, so, uh, give respect to your fathers if they're. Still with us or if they're not, give them respect for their, what they've done in their lifetime. I have nothing else. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I, uh, I think probably now is the time to bring this up. I, as we all know, I, uh, did, uh, contract, uh, COVID. And I have yet now to actually get the shot because I have to wait. Uh, for a period of time afterwards. That, that will put me in about August. Before I can, uh, get the, uh, vaccination. I'm a little concerned about, uh, coming to an open meeting, although I would, yeah, cause I always wear my mask and everything. But that could be somewhat problematic for me between, uh, for the month of, uh, July. Uh, I'm not saying one way or the other yet. I have to, uh, get with my doctor and see what they end up, uh. Saying and where my evaluation is, but I, I just kind of wanna make, uh, the, uh, mayor and council aware of my, uh, situation. So.
I do appreciate that, Robin. Um, you know, with your family doctor, maybe even talk to Joan, I tell, you know, and see what we can work out. If not, you know, I, we can excuse you for the month of. July and expect to see you in August, so I'll have to get your shots.
Okay.
That's up to you.
Uh, okay, well.